Meeting to order for the January tenth city council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good evening. Councilman Jindal.
President.
Councilman Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Portem Daily.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. With no closed session items this evening, we're going to start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Dr. Rigsby.
Dear Lord, we thank you once again for your wisdom and for imparting it on us. Please help us to act on that wisdom and not mess things up with our own. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, without doubt, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Dr. Lenart has joined us.
You may begin.
Yes, we're waiting. We've been waiting since five. Okay, Mr. City Manager, I understand we do have something to be added.
Yes, sir, we have one item to be added and then let the city attorney explain.
Would you want to explain what the item is?
Oh, oh, yes, yes, is is to is is to complete it, to file a notice completion for the bus stop and shelter construction that we did on on Barton Road. What happened, we we applied for a TDA grant through SBCTA and we received a grant. We completed the work ourselves and so we didn't file a notice completion, but to get the grant reimbursement, they said you have to do a notice completion, so I'm taking back to bring it back to the city council over their approval.
And we just learned about the need to do this the other day. So in order to add this item to the agenda, the council needs to make a determination that there's a need to take immediate action, number one, and number two, that the need came to the attention of staff after the posting of the agenda, which is what occurred, but we need you to make that determination, then we can add it to the agenda. And I think where you wanted to add it to the agenda, Mr. City Manager, was.
It could be a consent is what we usually do with a notice completion, yes.
Could make it seven A of the consent calendar.
Okay, Dr. Rigsby.
A question, what makes it immediate? Why do we have to do it this?
We will be hired and reimbursed. Is it fair?
The deadline for seeking the reimbursement has already passed, but they've extended it.
Okay.
In order to do that, we need to get the.
So we're not just behind, it's our last chance.
Yes.
Okay. Then.
If you want to put it that way.
So then I'll make the motion that we determine that this is an immediate need and whatever else we had to do.
It came to our attention after the posting of the agenda.
Yes, and that's it?
Yes.
That's the motion.
We have we have a first and a second. Do we need to call roll on this or?
However you'd like to do it, you can do it by just voice vote or call roll call. We're just adding it to the agenda, then you'll have to take the action later.
Right. I'll ask if there are any opposed. I see none, so I think that's good enough, we'll add it. Okay, thank you, moving on to the scheduled items. Item number one is a ratification of certificate of appropriateness for precise plan of design application number P two two zero zero four. And this was the item that we continued from last month, so we're moving forward because we didn't have the appropriate votes to move it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Lorena Matarita, I'm Director of Community Development for the city of Loma Linda. And as the mayor was saying, this is a continuation of last week. I'll try to be brief as much as possible, but as you know, I like to provide you as much information as possible. That way you guys can make an informed decision. But just as a quick reminder, the applicant is Lenar and he has, they have submitted a precise plan of design application to construct fifty-one single-family residences and develop five-letter lots within the previously approved map two zero four one seven. And within this development, there's going to be four architectural styles and three floor plans to choose from. Each lot is going to be a minimum ten thousand square feet and it's going to go all the way up to twenty-two thousand square feet. That is their largest lot. As I stated last month, and I'll repeat it this month, everything on the site plan does comply with both our zoning code and our the Groves at Loma Linda specific plan. You may also recall last month, the council had a few design concerns, especially around the topics of trees and the mailbox cluster. The discussion started because we were reviewing planning commission's added conditions from their lending and because the applicant was requesting modifications to those specific conditions. So one thing led to another and we ended up with two amended conditions and continuing the project. So in the past four weeks, I have met with the applicant and their team and the applicant has agreed to make feasible changes that would refine the project. You guys didn't request changes nor was it a recommendation or requirement, but he did agree to make these changes that would refine the project, but not change the actual project description or the proposed use. So their chosen changes focus primarily around the same two main topics we discussed, again, trees and the mailbox clusters. Okay, so what you see on the screen right there is the image of the original preliminary landscaping plan that we saw last month. And what you see now is the updated version. So one of the amended conditions was regarding the trees along the Zanga Trail, the public parkway, and along Mission Road. The applicant has opted to plant magnolia trees along Citrus Road to match the adjacent development next door at Citrus Trails. In terms of the Zanga condition that we brought up, if you recall, planning was asking to have two types of trees along Zanga Trails. So it is now reflected on this revised plan. The applicant has agreed to install two shade-producing trees. They are carrotwood and camphor trees, and again, both will provide substantial tree substantial shade. Previously, there was twelve trees and now there's fourteen trees. When it comes to Mission Road, we discussed that topic too. One of the conditions was to have the trees on Mission Road match with the residential development across the street. Well, I personally talked with the field maintenance tech for Public Works here at City Hall, and he was adamant, absolutely do not plant pepperwood trees. They are a nuisance and a maintenance issue. So what he recommended and the applicant agreed to was to plant carrotwood trees to match, not with the development across the street, but to match with the adjacent park next door. So there still will be consistency down Mission Road. And lastly, and something that we didn't discuss, but the applicant has also opted to narrow down the tree spacing from forty feet to thirty feet, giving the project a stronger and denser tree canopy along every pathway. So the industry standard for tree spacing is anywhere from forty to sixty feet. So we narrowed it all the way down to thirty feet. It was actually not suggested to have anything shorter than that in terms of tree spacing with these types of trees because these are shade-producing trees, as requested from both planning and city council. So on to the second item where we see changes on the the plans is the mailbox cluster. So the second condition was to work with staff to find a location for the mailbox cluster that is close to tree shading and tree shading and street lighting. You might recall that, right? Well, staff and the applicant are okay with that condition, we can leave it in, that's perfectly fine, we will work with them. But to take this a little further, the applicant has opted to upgrade the mailbox cluster since this is, we are attempting to make this a semi-custom rural estate type of development. So he has agreed to update it, and so what you'll see now, what you just saw was the previous mailbox. What what we see now is not only durable and compliant with the U.S. Postal Service, but is decorative with a sloping design and a balfeignon, and it has a decorative pedestal cover that provides an elegant finished look. So both the tree changes and the upgraded mailboxes are now reflected on your on your revised plans and the revised preliminary landscape plan. And as a reminder, again, these changes and everything else will go through the plan check process and he will have to submit final grading plans and final preliminary landscape plans to staff for further review. So on to the amended conditions. If you recall, there was three conditions that planning commission brought forth at the last meeting. We we crossed out, we crossed out the third one, no longer exists, and then we made amendments to the first and the second one. What you see in gray and crossed out, that's that was your changes, this city, this council's changes. And what I'm asking today, that it did not come from from the applicant, but what I'm asking today is that we just get rid of condition number one. Reason being is that the applicant already made the changes on these revised landscaping plans. He provided two types, minimum two types of trees that will produce substantial shade along Zanga Trail. And we already know that we cannot match with the adjacent, with the residential, the trees found at the residential development across the road. Instead, we are going with the trees found at the adjacent public park. And again, there's no reason for it to be a condition because it is already reflected on the plans. So ultimately, we are left with that one last condition, which is number two. And like I said, there is no problem, we work with the applicant all throughout the review period, throughout plan check. So that one, no one's asking for any further changes.
Question.
Yes, sorry.
What kind of trees are in the front yards?
I don't have the landscaping plan with me, but it is indicated, I think there's numerous ones that they are going to choose from.
Okay, so when you were saying you didn't want to match pepper trees, those are not pepper trees. I know the median, but I was confused about what you were trying to avoid matching. You didn't want to use pepper trees.
Yes, yes.
Where are those pepper trees we're not wanting to match?
So Mission Road, so basically.
Then I'm done.
Okay.
They're on the south side and in the median, and they're horrible.
Okay, yeah, because if you see right here, the original condition, it's one B. It says on Mission Road, basically match the street mediums found at the residential development across the street. I put an X there, so it's hard to read now, but.
I know that this is kind of off topic, but I know the the HOA is starting to replace a lot of a lot of the trees, at least in, yeah. So what are the chances if they start to remove some of those pepper trees on the south side that the city, we could look at something different for the median? Is that too expensive or, I mean, I don't. All the time. Maybe, I'm just thinking, maybe we should try to match what this is going to look like on the other side, I don't know.
You guys realize that Anderson Street used to be called Pepper Lane because of those trees? It's historic. Too bad.
And they, yeah, they damage vehicles and they they break in the wind and it's it's, they leave a lot of stuff. Anyway, that's my thought, anyway, sorry.
Okay. So again, that is the last amended additional condition that we we were left with. So to conclude, the applicant has made every effort possible to provide the most appropriate design and layout. The project complies with the goals of the general plan and the specific plan. It's compatible with existing and future uses in the area. Conditions are in place to ensure appropriate compliance with mitigations and city standards, as well as this new condition. And findings were provided in support of the current proposal. So staff is recommending city council, one, determine the project is exempt from CEQA. Two, ratify the certificate of appropriateness for the permit. And three, approve the precise plan of design permit to for this fifty-one single-family lots project. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I move the staff recommendations.
First and a second. Okay. I read through this this afternoon and the the two types of trees that are now going to be included in the development are carrotwood and camphor trees, correct?
Yes, because planning commission specifically asked us to call them out along Zanga Trail. So yes, those are the two chosen trees.
And I think the two issues that the council had, one was was dirty trees, so this helps resolve that.
Correct.
And and the other was adequate shade and they're moving the trees closer together to provide more of a canopy.
Correct, and even the chosen trees are shade-producing trees.
I thought I saw something in here and now I'm looking through it and I don't see it, about magnolia trees.
That is correct. So on Citrus Avenue, it will be magnolia trees to match the adjacent development. So along Citrus Avenue, wherever you go, it'll be a magnolia trees.
Okay.
And those two will be thirty feet separation.
Yeah, and that's great. No, my only issue is good luck to the people with magnolia trees as they grow because they shed year-round. That's why I was surprised, maintenance department or whoever went on landscaping. There's no perfect tree. I don't know what we have, but we got what our neighbors got and it's great. It only sheds in the fall and leaves turn yellow. Okay, okay. So much for trees. Mailboxes, they look nice and and I appreciate that they are accommodating that part of the discussion. My issue with the mailboxes was are they enhanced security by the post office?
Looking at the details, it comes from the post office website and it appears that way and they say it is.
Okay.
I can't promise anything, but I did look at the website and it says it's, they're secure mailboxes.
Okay.
And they're USPS approved, pre-approved.
Because when our neighborhood replaced our mailboxes, we checked with the post office and this is what they, what we got is what they recommended. So if they recommended this, then terrific. That's great, I appreciate their response. The only other part of the discussion that I recall that you haven't addressed, either as an oversight or deliberative, but I think it was Mayor Duper that had some concern about where the mailboxes are going to be placed on the cul-de-sacs. Yeah, but I think we couldn't determine that because the post office has to be involved post-construction.
Yeah, I think that's correct. Ultimately, we're leaving it to the postmaster to help make that determination. Right now, they're shown and indicated on the plans, but as we move forward, they might move slightly. If there is a preference of what street or what area, we can definitely work with that and let the postmaster know that this is the area that we're looking at if we can move it this way instead. But I'll go to the site plan where I can show you. I think we have two set up, if I remember correctly. I think one is right here.
I'm not seeing them.
So where the future Frank Ranch Road is at the terminus where it starts turning. And one will be in Orange Blossom Road in the cul-de-sac adjacent where Zanga Road and Orange Blossom Road meet. Do you see my red?
Yeah, I do, I do.
So the plan is for two different mailbox clusters. And I know we discussed different options last month, but nothing was agreed to. And I think like Mayor Duper was saying, that we're just, we're going to have to rely to the post office to giving us guidance when we come to that.
I see how it would be, I see how it'd be easier for the postal worker delivering, he only has two of them to go to.
Yes.
The poor people that buy at the top of the sheet are going to have a hike every time they want to want to go to the mailbox, but we all need exercise, so.
Yeah, and staff agrees with that. Originally, the original design only had one box cluster. And so we did ask to break it up if it's possible and I and I believe the post office would agreed with it. Like I said, having not talking to them directly, I can't tell.
It's up to the buyer. If sheriff's office is comfortable with it, I'm fine. We're going to get drones to deliver the mail. All right, we have a first, I'm sorry, we have more questions.
Just a comment. So I want to thank the city staff and our committees that have put countless hours into getting these plans up and revising them. So really appreciate you taking the feedback that was given last time and actioning it out. After reviewing the plans from last meeting, my issue wasn't so much with these plans as it was with the product that we had with the adjacent property. Main thing was I didn't appreciate some of the items that, for the lack of a better term, weren't paid attention to then that residents are bringing up now. After speaking with the city manager and these presentations, I'm pretty confident that we're doing a better job this time. And while not perfect, we're taking those learnings from the residents and building a better design and plan for this area. My only ask, and that's going to be one for the developer, is that the same one I made last time, these houses are going to be here for seventy to a hundred years, pretty permanent for many people's lifetimes. We want the developer to be successful, but we also want this place to be a place that someone's going to be proud to call home a hundred years from now. So some of the decisions that are coming, even if they're minor, just keep that in mind, right? We're building for the long term. Whether it's this plan or any other plans that we have for housing, come before the council, a hundred years down the road, right? Like, how can we make sure it's going to be something that we're going to look back and say, hey, we did a great job on this? But excited for this to get built and hopefully we're going to start seeing some pretty nice houses come up soon.
Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready.
I'm sorry. Motion is to determine the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Oh, motion is to approve precise plan of, precise plan of design permit number P twenty-two dash zero zero four to determine the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section one five one eight two. Ratify certification of appropriateness for precise plan of design permit number P twenty-two dash zero zero four and approve the precise plan of design permit number P twenty-two dash zero zero four, which includes the architectural styles and configuration for fifty-one single-family estate-style residence on ten thousand square foot minimum lots. The twenty-two point five eight acre vacant site is located in Planning Area three dash six of the Grove's specific plan, south of Park Avenue, north of Mission Road, and intersected by Bryn Mawr Avenue. Is designated in Special Planning Area D within the Historic Mission Overlay District, Zone Plan Community, and intended very low-density residential, based on the findings and information contained on the original staff report dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and with the revisions made to the planning commission recommended agenda items. Councilman Jindal.
Yes.
Councilman Lenart. Councilman Rigsby.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily.
Aye.
And Mayor Duper.
Yes.
The item was approved unanimously.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent.
Move it.
We have a first and a second.
Got a question.
Yep.
For number seven, do we have an existing agreement with any other university or college?
No, this will be the first one.
Just out of curiosity, was there a reason CBU came up and not like Health State San Bernardino or?
Yes, let Sonia will present.
Good evening. I reached out to CBU simply because it was one of the schools I had looked into. I'm willing to look into other schools as well.
Great, yeah, I really like this concept and I think we should definitely offer it for our staff. It sounds great and the more options, the better. Talking about options, it said it's not applicable for nursing. Is there a reason for that?
That's CBU's specifications, that's their exclusion.
Got it, cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
I figured, I think every single nursing school around here is cutthroat.
And just to add, that is the only school that I'm aware of that does this program, but I will definitely look into other schools.
Can I just verify, confirm, Councilman Lenart, were you, did you second that motion?
Yes, I think so.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Councilman Jindal.
Yes.
Councilman Lenart. Councilman Rigsby.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily.
Aye.
Mayor Duper.
Yes.
The consent items were approved.
Thank you very much. What could we add? I thought it was on the consent calendar. We added it to seven A, or we made it seven A, so it was in the consent calendar. You know, I understand that. Okay, that's fine. It's not related to seven, so it's not unusual that it be an A, but I don't care. Yeah, we couldn't make it an eight because there already was an eight. Yeah, yeah, I see, got it. Okay, there's no old business, moving on to new business. Item number eight, presentation from the city manager.
Okay, I don't have any PowerPoint, but we have our information in the back of the the staff report.
With approval. I'm thrilled with the with the agenda item description.
Well, a little background before we approve because we spent a lot of time on this item, so. Boy, Lieutenant wants to jump up and down, but but.
I gotta look back around indeed, okay.
Well, we we have a lot of, not a lot, but but increase in home burglary and and catalytic converter theft here in town. And so we've been looking for a way to to prevent that or be able to catch those those thieves. Currently, we have two portable license plate reader that we put on a trailer and we always pull it out when this event, when the, and it doesn't work very well. So we work with the county sheriff department and and they introduce the FLOCK security system. And on December fourteenth, the mayor, Lieutenant Smith, and I met with the representative from the FLOCK security system. They show us the their technology, which is the the camera that we will be installed at each intersection and can be used a solar panel or it can hook up to our traffic signal pole. So we're looking at the, to install the camera at seven locations, six locations in the city. That is at Redlands and Anderson, Redlands and Richardson, Redlands and Mountain View, Redlands and California, Barton Road and New Jersey, and Beaumont and Nevada Street. And this is the the location that the traffic go into the city. Now, we have one location at Waterman and Barton Road because if you sign up with this camera, we have access to any camera in our neighbor's city. And the city of Colton is going to install the one at intersection of Barton Road and Waterman Street so we can use their, the camera, access to the camera. So.
On the south side of the street?
On all four.
Gets all four.
Four, it is four corners.
Okay, because I thought part of the corner was San Bernardino.
Yes, but but.
The north side of this intersection is San Bernardino.
You're right. But we saw the location where they planned to put it by by the cemetery, so it's going.
Well, that's not going to read people coming out of Loma Linda very well. It's the wrong side of the street.
We'll have to look at, he's got the representative on on the line on Zoom, I believe.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to figure out how you're going to catch the guys who steal my catalytic converters and you missed him.
So.
Hey, we can talk to the city San Bernardino about.
District one cares.
Just just to get, I'll jump in and give a little background on this. It's it's not the same technology that we've seen before. That technology is fairly widespread and it's really kind of outdated and antiquated. And a lot of the companies that are still doing it the old way are not, they're not, they're not being innovative. This is a completely different company, it's kind of new to California. We would be the first city with the sheriff's department to get it. We're not the first city here in the county. Most of the other cities have already jumped on board, but this technology is, it's, uses AI to identify vehicles, not just license plates. So it's way more intuitive and and it's got more capabilities. So I don't know if we want to get into into the weeds and the details, but it doesn't require as much coverage as the old ones do. So there's a possibility, depending on where, and even if we enter in it, because we have, are both corners on the north side in San Bernardino?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we we may be able to offer something to Colton or do something in partnership to be able to catch that coverage because it may. to be able to catch that coverage, because it may be just as much as catching Barton instead of the intersection, just traffic east and west right there on Barton, maybe all we need, if that makes sense. We may not need to.
Well, we can, we can always, we can always, we can always install one at the Gage Canal crossing Barton.
Yes, yes.
If we need to.
And then the other, the other part of this, this, this company that's different from other, other solutions is that other solutions require that you buy the hardware, which is very, very expensive upfront, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is a lease with, with their equipment, and we can cancel. It's a year-to-year type deal. So if this does not produce the way we think it's going to produce, then we can come back next year, and we haven't wasted a lot of money, if that makes sense.
How long is the data kept?
So this is another unique thing about this company. This company, how do I say this? The pitch that they gave us, they're, they're, they have a big footprint up in the north. A lot of cities up in the north use it. And a lot of the cities up in the north are very concerned with things like that. So this company, right from the beginning, has a different pitch than the other ones. They destroy the data in thirty days. As a general rule, there are some exceptions if you ask for certain things like that, but as a general rule, their thought process is if you don't act on that, if you don't work that investigation within thirty days, then what's the point? So we both looked at it, and we think that that's reasonable. And like I said, they're establishing quite a footprint. Riverside County, incredible footprint there.
Yeah, Moreno Valley's have it, so.
Yeah, so we talked about the backside of the hills from us and all that, but we would potentially be the first for the sheriff's department, which is, which is kind of cool.
And both City of Redlands and City of Colton will have him, so.
Yeah. So right now, our investigators are actually working with Redlands a lot of times on our cases to see if they have this data, so.
Any of those?
Sorry, I, yeah. Casey can jump in, sorry if I missed anything.
If we've, our neighborhood has had at least two, and I think three, of these break-in thefts, where they get into the backyard and just smash through the sliding glass patio door, and they're in and out inside of five minutes is what. The reason I know a little bit about these things is because what's been happening is then the deputies are walking and knocking on houses anywhere adjacent to the break-in and ask if we have, and they came to our house because we have security cameras set up, and two or three other houses do as well, what they discovered. Much to my chagrin is, we had them, but nobody, nobodies were working or they didn't know how to work them. And, and so that was kind of a bust. So then they were looking at houses that had doorbell cameras to see if they could get something. So this would alleviate that, and, and I had a good conversation with a couple of deputies who were explaining to me that if we had some way of knowing who's entering the city and leaving the city.
Yes.
That that would be very helpful.
Yes, with the image of, of a car, can be a white car at three-thirties.
So traditionally, I've been very opposed to traditional license plate cameras, because in my opinion, they capture good people about ninety-nine percent of the time. And criminals will often, as in the case with the deputy sheriff that was killed in Riverside the week before last, he stopped a truck that didn't have the correct plate on it, right? So, so criminals switch up the license plates, they take the license plates off, they do all this other stuff, and traditional license plate reader technology that many cities have invested hundreds, if not millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, in, in their technology, just reads a license plate. And so my argument has been for a long time, obviously being in law enforcement, a lot of times the success stories that we rely on are personal crimes, violent crimes, where you have some type of a lead where a license plate or something like that is easier to connect. But these property crimes are not often tied to a specific license plate, if that makes sense. So what this technology offers is it doesn't identify necessarily the plate, although it does read the plate, it uses AI to say, that's a Toyota Corolla, that's a F-150, that's a, that's a blue, that's a purple Scion with a red streak in the back, and literally it gets to that level of detection. And so that, it just offers more value. I think it's more targeted on the specific crime and criminal, and the data retention is completely different.
Does it, does it automatically flag a license plate car mismatch?
No. Yeah, that's one of their, that's one of.
That would be, that's next.
Well, no. And that goes back to their commitment over the, the data and the privacy. There, where some of these other companies and programs connect to government databases, this does not, and they're very proud of that. So their point is, you have to go in and look for the red Scion, there'll be a picture of the license plate, and then you can do your database checks outside of that. But they don't want to connect to big government, because then that would, in terms of marketing, how they market to various communities, that is part of their, part of their marketing plan. Does that make sense? So what, the way this, and I know, I think the guy's on Zoom, right? I gave him a hard time, I really did, so, and he was a good sport about the whole thing. But I believe the way the company was started, and I just recommended this to my HOA, it was started at an HOA. The, the guy who created this, he did it for his HOA, and then it went out, correct? I'm looking for a nod or something. Yeah. So this is something that, that just came up in, in my HOA, because we have tried various things. We've hired private security companies, we've tried various things like that. So I think one of the next things we might look at is this, because again, it's, it's different. It's not that direct government connection, government-controlled. We at the HOA would then own the data and imagery, and we could share it with the sheriff's department, if that makes sense. I'm oversimplifying, but make sure I'm not wrong. Jesse?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Mayor is correct. We do not connect to the DMV or any third-party database to collect personal identifiable information about any person who is in that vehicle. The one thing we do connect to is the California Stolen Vehicle System Registry, which is published by the California DOJ every six hours, and that will be the proactive side and notify law enforcement if a felony or wanted vehicle passes by the camera, or an amber alert or a silver alert. However, we do not have any idea within the camera or within the images that come through who the owner of the vehicle is, who the owner of the vehicle is registered to. That would be something law enforcement has to manage and maintain and deal with outside of our system.
So physically, how's this going to work? Obviously, we're going to have cameras set up at the key intersections. Where, where's the hardware and who has access to it?
So it's all done in the cloud? It's, it's all controlled by the, by the company, and the company grants access to the sheriff's department. So in fact, the city would not, we would not have access to that, because there's no need. Well, we would, we'd pay the bill, but then credentials would be given to the investigators here, and they would manage that.
And the company's Lancaster, California.
Well, the original, no, the company's in Dallas, Texas, right? Was it Dallas? No.
I got Lancaster, California, so. He's in Texas. Where's the company headquarters? Jesse?
You need to speak into the mic. You're talking to the picture.
Jesse, where's the company located at?
The company's corporate office is in Atlanta, Georgia.
Oh, oh, I was wrong. I thought it was Lancaster, California, so, sorry.
They are a customer, but they're, they're not where the corporate offices.
Oh, okay.
And just a quick summary, so there's about, of the five-hundred-and-thirty-four law enforcement agencies in California, just over half use our technology. And in Southern California, nearly a hundred departments from Baker Field on down are customers. So City of Ontario, City of Redlands, City of Upland, City of Barstow, City of Chino, just to name a few, and I believe fourteen of the seventeen sheriff cities in Riverside County, and nearly every other city up and down the fifteen are all Flock customers. So we do have a very large presence in the region, and that is going to add a lot of value for the City of Loma Linda and law enforcement in the region.
I think we had, we had a motion, I think you already said.
What, what is the award or contract for forty-eight thousand?
Yes, if you look at.
Is that the installation, and what's the maintenance after that?
Yes, if you look at the back, is, is the, we can install a total of seventeen camera at the cost of three-hundred-and-fifty dollars each for the camera, and then the.
So that includes installation of the camera?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
And, and for, for hardware and software services is two, two thousand five hundred per each camera. So for time seventeen is forty-two thousand five hundred, so the combined total is forty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Could I, could I offer a modification to the maker of the motion, if you're amenable to it?
And, and hold on, one more thing is, is also ask the, to approve an appropriation of forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from the.
COPS.
COPS grants fund balance, so none of this is general fund. We receive about a hundred thousand dollars a year from the state. COPS stand for Citizen Option to Safe, to Public Safety, COPS grant funding.
So the installation is three-hundred-and-some thousand?
No, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Oh, three, I, that's what I meant, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And, and so the, the initial contract is for forty-eight, four-fifty. Okay, a year from now, when we have all the cameras, what, what's the annual?
Forty-two thousand five hundred.
Okay.
If, if you go, it's in the back, it's in the part of the package.
So, so this is my suggestion, I'm not sure if you're amenable to it, and that would be to give, to add a caveat here to give leeway to the city manager to potentially modify that dollar amount if we figure out that camera coverage at Barton and Waterman needs to be modified.
That's accepted.
And I think the, the second accepted that modification.
Yes, accepted.
Okay, this is paid through the COPS grant.
Yes.
Agreement now. How long does that last?
Well, every, so far, we've been receiving it every year.
Oh, well.
Yes.
There's no sunset on it, it just goes on and on?
No.
Pretty good, okay.
Even the state line out, money might be different.
This is law enforcement, man, no wonder you guys have so much money.
Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve a supplemental appropriation of forty-eight thousand five hundred from the Citizens' Option for Public Safety COPS Grant Fund Balance into the COPS contractual agreement account one-three-five-five-four-three-zero-dash-five-eighteen-thirty, and to board a contract for forty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty to Flock Group Incorporated for the installation and monitoring of seventeen LPR cameras at various locations, and to add the modification for the city manager to modify the dollar amount should the camera at Waterman?
Should, should we need additional cameras for coverage?
Oh, should, should we need, should the city need additional cameras for, for coverage in the city? Correct. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The item was approved.
Thank you very much. And I want to congratulate Lieutenant Smith, because she was really the one that spearheaded all of this and has been working on it super, super hard for the last couple of months, so all the credit goes to her. She's the really one who pulled all this together and, and kind of brought it all to a head, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much.
And then, while we're talking about her, real quick, let's put her on the spot. I just learned that she has family history that goes back here to the city of Loma Linda. Her great-great-grandfather owned the blacksmith shop that was down there where the current Baker's is, at the corner of Redlands Boulevard and Anderson, but what used to be Pepper, there used to be some other street right there.
Pepper Lane and Colton Avenue was the intersection.
Ah, there you go.
Because it, it became Redlands Boulevard, I think in the forties or something like that, a long time ago, so.
When you first moved here?
Yes, yes.
He said, he said he used the bar and the services.
I earned my white hair, old man. You don't have white hair yet. You probably, you probably used dye.
All right, anyway, thank you very much. Congratulations on that. Moving on to item number nine.
This is pretty straightforward. One of the historical committee, Mr. Wesley James resigned, and the staff would like to request that we declare a vacancy and advertise for, for the, the notice of vacancy.
We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk.
Motion is to accept with regret the resignation from Wesley James from the historic commission, declare the vacancy, and direct city staff to post the notice of vacancy. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The item was approved.
Thank you. Item number ten, our SCAG delegate.
Yes, every year, we, SCAG have annual meetings down in Palm Springs, and for this year is May fourth to May fifth, Palm Desert, I'm sorry. So we need a designation for.
I, I seem to recall, and the, and Dr. Rigsby's been here a lot longer than I have, but we always send.
We've established that now.
Well, not like that, I mean, on the council. But you went last year, right? But before that, you went every year before that.
So I don't mind going, but I'd recommend that other council members also get the opportunity. They're pretty informative, and I think I'm the only one here that's been, so, there's four others.
I've successfully avoided it for sixteen and a half years.
I think we should put on the consent calendar that Jarb do, because every year it's on the consent count.
I'd be happy to.
Jarb.
Give you an opportunity to go.
Jarb has to be at least the alternate. Yeah.
Yeah, so again, I don't mind going, but I'd recommend that you guys also get a opportunity to do it.
I, I, well, I mean, I could check my schedule. I mean, we could send more than one person to it. How about we?
I think we have one, and then if anyone else wants to do it.
How about, yeah, how about, how about you be the delegate? Jarb goes, and the backup, and I'll look and see if my schedule, maybe I can go, just to go to the conference, I'll see. Yeah, you guys go with that? You know, we, we've adopted the, the by-vote thing since that was kind of like a COVID thing. Should we go back to just, you know?
Whoever wants to go can go. If there's a fight, then we'll decide.
No, I was talking about how we vote on issues.
Hearing no objections.
Hearing no objections, yes, okay.
Hearing no objections, approved.
All right, that sounds like we're doing that. Is that good, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Because I feel bad for you, you have to call the roll like fifteen times, and it's... Okay, reports of council members? Yes, sir.
All righty. As you guys know, my expertise is in supply chain and transportation. So I applied for the League of Cities Committee on Transportation, Communication, and Public Works, pretty broad committee. So I was thankfully accepted onto the committee, so I think between me and the mayor, there's a, for especially a city of our size, we have a lot of representation, not just in the League of Cities, but also as an extension in the state. So we're going to try to work to make sure that we're representing Loma Linda well.
Good deal. Congratulations, sir. Anything else?
I have one item.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Reports of officers.
I think it was two weeks ago, a councilman, Ron Daily, came by to see me regarding this utility bill, the way we, we change the billing provider, contractors, and it kind of got confusion, so I asked Sonia, I'll find out, during the presentation, about our utility billing, is we give more detail and then it gets confused, and so.
Obviously, no veteran would have been asking if bills hadn't been coming in higher.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the staff, and members of the public. I'm Sonia Fabello, Finance Director for the City of Loma Linda. As Jarb requested. As Jarb requested, I, I have put together a PowerPoint presentation to give you information regarding the new software. As you know, we've been implementing since last year. This, this time around, we've implemented utility billing, and we have gone online, and we are now able to make payments and view your account online. You can make changes to your accounts, whatever you need to do. And then we've also added a new phone number to make payments over the phone, and it's an automated way of making payments. So for now, I'd like to point out these websites. The first one. to point out these websites. The first one is directly on the city's website, and these are also printed on the utility bills in very small print towards the middle of the bill. The middle, the first one is the city's website, the second one is the utility user self-service website. That's where you will manage your, your bills. And then the third one is the water consumption website. That one is managed by Master Meter, and it's ran through their Harmony program, and that one will give you the amount of consumption that you have by the hour.
So really, this is a pretty, pretty neat software that you can log on to your, your account and see your water consumption. It's when you walk in to your house, you go to the bathroom, and boom, it's come up.
Sure.
Must have some super flush toilets.
You had mentioned that you could track when a toilet's leaking. If a resident wanted to do that, how would they do it?
Yes. So, so for example, even at home, there'd be no numbers coming up, it'd be flat. But if it have a leaked toilet, a leak irrigation system, even if nobody home, the water consumption's going up.
How could residents check that on here?
That's why you go to this website.
That would be the third one?
Yes, and then you can view it, you can print it, and so by, by hourly, by date, so you can do that.
Do fire sprinklers run through the gauge?
No.
Or they have an independent line to the trunk?
No, it goes to the same, same lateral.
But they don't move either?
They don't move.
Well, the water's stagnant. In fact, you're supposed to-
I know, but Mike, Mike, see, I'm worried about, you know, a fire sprinkler flooding my house during my vacation. It's gonna show up on this, right? Good.
Which, which brings up a good point about that. I flushed mine for the first time about a year or so ago. I actually had to get the Fire Marshal's help to figure it out, and that was very telling. There was a lot of stuff that just builds up in that water after it sits there for years and years and years. And so I, it's become a routine now. At least once a year, I flush it.
What kind of tubing?
It's, it's all PVC.
PVC gets junk?
Yeah, I, I would, I, I'm just telling you, some-
Yeah.
darker-than-clear water came out of that pipe when I opened it up. So it was interesting. Something, bacteria, I don't know, but I'm just telling you, you should test it. Also to test to make sure the alarms and signals go up.
If you would like to sign up to see your utility bills online, you can go to the self-service, self-service Loma Linda, self-service dot lomalinda-ca.gov, and you will need your current bill in order to register. So you will see this prompt up on the screen that asks you for your email address. I'm sorry. It will ask you for your email. If you want to register, you click on register for a new account, which is highlighted in blue down at the bottom. You will need your email address. It'll ask you for your first name, your last name, and then it'll ask you to create a password of your choice. Then it will go through, verify, and then confirm your account. You'll get an email that will say, congratulations, you've registered. Click on this link to confirm that you've requested this registration. And then once you're there, you can log into your account. On the far right side, you'll see, you'll see two sections. You'll see customer accounts and then utility billing accounts. Right now, we're covering utility billing accounts. So in order to link your account, if you have multiple accounts, you can link them as well here. Click on the link on the right side, and then it'll prompt you for your account number, I'm sorry, your account ID, and then your customer ID, and those are both in your utility bill. And then you just click submit, and you'll do that for each account that you have with the city. So as you know, these are the refuse, these are the water and sewer rates, and including the refuse rates. The refuse rates changed October first, and as you know, we have two billing cycles within the city. Half of the city is on one, the other is on the other cycle. So we are, we switched over to the new billing system in November. So we sent out bills at the end of November, and so the bills that went out for that billing cycle were prorated for the refuse rates. But these rates that you see here have already been updated.
Have you had very many citizens coming in when we switch billing systems?
Yes, we did have-
That's what sent people to my door. Nobody, none of the rest of you? I mean, the bill looks totally different from the way it used to.
We gotta go or whatever.
Yeah, okay. But that's, and so people thought there were rate changes, and their bills were higher, and more complicated?
So this is what the new bill looks like. This is what Mr. Daly's referring to. You will see, it looks different. The amounts and rates have not changed. It's just the format and the look. So you'll see that there's a customer name. I've blocked it out because this is an actual account and it's private, so. But there's a customer name, customer number, and then service location. You'll see the, the cycle date, the account number, and then the type of account. This one's a single family. And then it breaks down the rates. In the previous billing system, we were able to condense those rates and show them as water hazardous waste sewer and refuse. So you'll see on this slide the previous bill versus the new bill. This new billing system is more detailed, and we were under the assumption that we could summarize it the way the previous bills were, but we were not able to. And so that's why you'll see a more detailed breakdown of what the rates entail. But if you see in the parentheses, I have summarized them. So if you want to compare the water, you, you could take the water standby in city and the water used in city, and that will total approximately the same rate. This particular account had twenty-seven units that they used for the previous cycle, and then in November, they used twenty-two. So their bill is a little bit lower, even though the refuse rates went up a little bit. Their bill is still comparable. It didn't, you know, have any additional fees. It's still the same. It's just that now we're showing the fees in a more detailed way. And so to kind of go over the, the breakdown, you want me to go back?
I want to point out one thing, like, like, somebody said, why are we paying the city of San Bernardino? Okay, our sewer go to the sewer treatment plant in the city of San Bernardino. So that's why there's a line item for San Bernardino sewer.
I, I think that's a, I actually think that's a great move because it helps educate the people that, that that's a pass-through.
And it flows downhill.
So this is a detailed explanation of what those fees are. So in the previous bill, you just saw water, but now you'll see a water standby in the city, which is a standard rate of thirty-seven, forty-six for a residential through three-quarter meter. I'm just using that as an example. And then the water used in the city, that's a water charge based on the conception. So for one to eighteen hundred cubic feet, it's a dollar eighty-three per hundred, hundred cubic feet, or per unit. So it, and then the rate increases depending on the amount of usage. For the sewer, there's a Loma Linda sewer, single-family rate, and then there's a San Bernardino rate. Those are flat rates. And for commercial and irrigation, for both of them, it's, there's another rate that's based on the amount of consumption that they have. And then for the sewer, it depends on the type of account as well. For the refuse rates, you'll see that there's more, more rates included in there. And, and this, the way that it's broken down, it also helps the finance department to view the amount of revenue that's coming in, and we're able to take that information and pass through the amounts that are due to CRNR. So the ninety-six gallon residential garbage that's established by CRNR, you guys approved a, a rate increase for October first, and then it's based on the SISO receptacle as well. So this is a pass-through, and it's for organics disposal and to pay the waste disposal agreement to the County of San Bernardino. And there's also a pavement impact fee of five percent to kind of offset the cost to, that is, the impact on city streets. There's a franchise fee of fifteen percent, and then there's a residential service component that goes to the holler for their service. For the household hazardous waste, that's a fee that's collected by the city to pay San Bernardino Fire Department to dispose the hazardous waste.
On, on, the one other thing that I wanted the other councilman to be aware of is, I've had, I don't know, two, three people in, in my region of the city that say they don't need the ninety-six gallon refuse pickup. Are there smaller versions? And my understanding is there are, but it's like, what, three dollars a month cheaper or something?
Yes, it's a minimal difference. And usually, the smaller ones are for like apartment buildings or for like a retired couple that there's only two people in the home.
It's, it's not that big a deal, once I got back to them.
So the benefits of this customer portal is you're able to manage your bills. Unfortunately, you won't be able to see any past bills because that was in a, a different billing system, but you will be able to see the current and the future bills, any outstanding bills, any past due bills. And then, like I mentioned before, you can link multiple accounts if you have multiple accounts. You can make your payments on the website. We can set you up, you can set yourself up for EFT payments. You just need your banking information, such as your routing, your account number. And there's, customers can see, when you see your banking and you do sign up for EFT, previously, we used to be able to charge one amount for all of the accounts that you may have, but now you'll see charges or the money coming out of your account by account, by City of Loma Linda account. So instead of having one lump sum pulled out, you'll now see it by account. So you might see multiple amounts coming out of the, your bank account. And then you can also sign up to pay with a credit card or ATM card, and you can see the billing history, payment history. You can request address changes, and if you would like to ask any questions, you can email the finance department directly. If you would like to have your bills emailed to you rather than come through the mail, you can contact the finance department, and we'll be happy to set you up and collect your email address. Right now, with the two billing cycles that went out, we only have forty-seven people that are receiving emailed statements. So if you'd like to get those emails, let us know.
Can, can you do automatic bill pay, electronic billing through banks?
Bill pay, bill pays through your bank, and then EFT comes directly being pulled out of your account with our system pulling it out.
Yeah, I understand that, but the rest of my bills, they automatically send an electronic bill through my bank, and then I handle it all in one spot. So it sounds like we still can't do that.
We do have people that pay their bills through bill pay.
Yeah, and I have to do it manually, but I can do automatic bill pay, where I don't have to mess with it if it's at, through the Mac.
Oh, well, that's when you would set up your EFT, so have it directly pulled out.
Yeah, it's just a different mechanism.
Yes, it's a different.
Is there a charge for using the credit card option?
Uh, no, currently we're not. The city has elected not to charge utility customers.
The only, the only thing that I was just thinking about, about people switching to email versus sending the bill, we think that's saving paper, which it is, but that was our mechanism too for sending out potentially citywide information and notices. So, I mean, I guess, if we have that information.
Those notices can be included with the bill as well.
In the email.
In the email. And you can have it, you can have it mailed and emailed, if you still would like to keep a hard copy. And lastly, I'd like to point out the automated phone payments. This is the phone number to call, eight-eight-eight-two-eight-eight-five-six-one-four, if you'd like to pay with the credit card. And I would really like to thank Carrie, Carrie Howard, Supervising Accounting Technician. She was hugely instrumental in getting this implemented, and as well as Maria Mudo, Mudo. She was very helpful as well, and the entire finance department that helped out while they were really busy working on this.
And answered a lot of phone calls, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put it on my little city council desk at home when people ask questions, because it's inevitable.
Thank you.
I don't want to spend money on the paper.
All right, so-
Comment? Yes, sir.
I'm gonna piggyback off what the mayor and Mayor Protem mentioned. Before I do that, love what you're doing today. Really like the CBU program that you, did you get that started?
Yes.
Great. And then also this presentation, it's really great for us to know what's happening. My piggyback comment, so we're doing a lot of great things, right? Those two examples I just mentioned, and I'm assuming we all agree that all our residents should know this is happening, and that we're doing a lot of things to make Loma Linda a better place to be. One thing that the mayor said is, the notices that go out, right, they usually went out by mail, and that was a way for people to see them. Everyone consumes information differently, especially amongst the different generational levels. It would be great if we could have some kind of infographic on this that I could, or that we could disseminate via email, Facebook, to gather more population. I see you're getting excited, so I'll go ahead and let you-
I'm excited.
Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm- Glad you mentioned that, and, and there's a couple things that the city have been working on. I'm gonna present it to, to Lorena. She's, she's a younger generation of our staff, and she is helping me with, what is that?
Are you TikToking Jarb?
Yeah, social media, and also the newsletter that you ask if, that, that company that can help us with electronic newsletter, and, what do you call it again? Like PR company?
EnterGov?
No. Another one that want to meet with us and do a-
The video.
Yes, CGI, the, the video company.
Yes, so explain it to, to him for me. So it's a new, new thing that the city would like to do to promote the city and, and publication, and, and it's, it's above me, so I asked Lorena to help me, and so.
Yes, we've been recently approached by a company that works with small cities. They provide a free service helping put together video commercials about the city. We get to pick the topic. Again, they're gonna be free videos. They provide one-to-four videos, and the way that they get paid is hope, hopefully, contracting with local businesses and helping them with their social media, or doing commercials for them. So I, ultimately, it's going to be commercials for Loma Linda, a way to promote us and promote whatever we're doing. Again, we, we get to work on the script. We get to pick the topics. So if it wants to be something like educating the public about our utility billing, we can do that too. And, and they will provide the staff, they will provide the equipment, and they will provide the video file for us to own it. So that's one project that we're looking on, we're looking to, and hopefully, we'll bring it back before this council when, when we narrow down all the details.
Yeah, so that sounds great. In addition to videos, I think, so if you look at examples from our supervisor, Don Rao, and City of Redlands, I think they both do a really good job of having, you know, something big lettering, and they just post it out to the crowd. So I think some kind of combination of that, if we could get help on that too, that would be really wonderful for-
I'm, I'm looking for a writer.
Getting messages out.
We're good at writing, so.
Getting what?
Writing the article.
Gotta be quick and like Dr. Rigsby's prayers, so.
Okay.
Can you say something?
Yes, ma'am.
We did receive a public request to speak from Dick Wiley. I don't know if it got-
It got buried underneath the, sorry, got buried.
I did read it, so I was just sure what I did.
Dick, did you still want to come up and speak?
Did it turn on? How'd you turn it?
Yeah, we took it from there.
All right.
Sorry about that. Your, your little slip got buried here underneath everything.
Thank you.
We can hear you.
Okay, anyway, I would pass to, pass on to you, that Joe Frank was up at the Adobe this last Friday, and he says that the target we had, the disc rain that was up there, pretty well, you know, weathered out, it's all off the roof. So, he was checking, and there are those spots and holes, you know, pop up. He doesn't know for sure how the walls are, who's standing in this rain. So, they're starting to shift a little bit. He's not quite sure. But he said he wanted to make sure that everything covered and done because if this rain continues, that's not gonna be good for the Adobe.
Yes, Mr. Uh, Dangerman, Pete Dangerman did contact High Point and, and so, so, uh, I understand that they received the, the email and we can follow up, see what they plan to do with it. So, yes.
Yeah, remember, at this point, High Point owns it and there's a deal in the works between High Point and the Conservancy. So, we're out of it.
Well, he just wanted to be aware of here amongst you guys that, you know, something is gonna need to be done. Where they do, of course, there's the, the plexiglass that's over the exposed portion. He said, some of that you can see is getting water and dirt. So, that's not gonna be good for the Adobe. Just, you know, just stay up for it.
Yep, Happy New Year. Thank you very much. Okay, we've got two other agendas to knock out real quick. Let's open the Housing Authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on and on an agendized item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Consent Calendar. Uh, first, Anna, second. Madam Clerk, if you would please.
Motion is to approve the Consent Calendar item on the housing agenda, Housing Authority agenda, as submitted. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daly?
Yes.
The item was carried, motion carried.
Thank you very much. No new business. Chair member officer reports. We'll adjourn that and move into the Successor Agency. Any items there to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay. Any comment from the public? Seeing none. Dick, no, nothing on this? Got it. Move on to the Consent Calendar. Go first.
Second.
Anna.
I beat him today.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the Consent Calendar on the Successor Agency agenda, as submitted. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenart?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. That concludes all of our agendas. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.